I will call this meeting to order.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with God, indivisible, with liberty, that is for all.
All right, we have a special presentation today on the United Negro College Fund Workplace Giving Campaign. And I'll turn it over to Jerry Piggies and Steve Miller.
Good morning or good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. My name is Steve Miller. I'm the Area Development Director for United Negro College Fund. I cover all of Ohio and Kentucky, and I'm here to thank you for your support for our workplace campaign and congratulate you again for being our number one workplace campaign in my region. It's been a lot of hard work done by your team, Jerry Piggies, Tom, and a number of coordinators like Linda White and many others have just worked so hard to support the work that we do to support our minority students. Local minorities. I'm just going to go through a couple of slides, give you an overview of what we've been doing, why it's important, why your support is so critical. Montgomery County Workplace provides an opportunity for your employees to support our students through their payroll giving. Very successful way for them to support every dollar count, any dollar. And they all add up for over thirty thousand dollars for their side. These are just other areas or footprints that we cover. I have Kentucky, Ohio, as I mentioned. Montgomery County, part of this to thank you for what you've done, create a wide opportunity for employee giving, proceeds, support economically disadvantaged youth regardless of race and gender. Our scholarships provide opportunities to any student, go to any school, not just limited to historically black colleges. You can go to Ohio State, State, Natty, Cammy, Harvard, go before forever. Our scholarships are based on merit and need, and we have a scholarship to you that does support a number of students, local students, and that's exciting. Campaign works with the support of our local working at our county employees, volunteer, healthcare, our message, and tell your associates, employees, friends, family members about the work they're doing. And I can't be here all the time, so your coordinators really help tell our story. And the good thing is, is that we have Montgomery County employees like Michael Colbert, Tom Kelly, who are HBCU graduates. So we know that talent comes out of these historic black colleges that we are primarily focused for. Thirty-seven member institutions are private schools primarily in central state as the other seventy-eight schools are federally funded. So our private schools don't receive state and federal fund. So UNCF provides biannual financial support to those thirty-seven member institutions. I grew up before, I'm a graduate, but we encourage the kids to go anywhere. We have a number of examples of other corporate partners and at the county organization. You guys do an amazing job. The creativity, energy, and excitement that is created due to the work and volunteer opportunities and donations that come from the county are very exciting. And I know Jerry's gonna talk about that in the future, but we do want to give a special thank you for mad scientist, Tom Kelly, that comes up and comes in innovative opportunities. But we provide all the material, not all of it, but most of the material from headquarters that gives your employees, coordinators, information so they can tell our story correctly and with additional detail about the importance of donations, what it does. And again, every dollar is very, very important. We appreciate all this support. And again, Jerry does a great job with working with coordinators, coming up with other opportunities he's going to talk about. And it's just a lot of fun. It really benefits the work that we do. In the state of Ohio, we have provided about one point three million dollars of financial support. In the city of Dayton or the area of Dayton, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. And that's a lot of money for a young person who's trying to go from senior in high school, freshman college, freshman sophomore, sophomore, junior. We also provide internships in our junior year program. And it's just that hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, two thousand dollars makes a big difference to a family that's trying to make sure their parents can go to school and continue to finish. Your support is greatly appreciated. We are excited to have you as our number one workplace partner again ever since I got here. And we all know that no good deed goes unpunished, so that means you gotta raise more money next year. So we thank you very much. God bless you and always available to support anything that you guys do. Just really thank you.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to it.
Any questions?
No.
So I'm going to talk about Montgomery County specifically and the excitement that we've had. See, I referenced a little bit about the activities that we have here for our students. But first, I want to say thank you to our uh, and then ask to our assistant county administrator, Michael Colbert, and then my assistant county administrator, Michael Colbert, and our assistant county administrator, Tom Kelly. For all of the support that you provided. So sit back, get ready for this exciting campaign here. I also want to thank the elected officials because they also have been very supportive of our campaign. Our county agencies and our department heads well have supported. So here you can see, our campaign was established as Steve mentioned to help our students attend colleges and universities across the U of A, as long as it's a credited two-year or four-year university. And they have the needed criteria, have the unmet needs, and they're able to apply for the scholarship. There's some other criteria that I'll talk about a little bit later. You can see here, pre-pandemic, we were able to raise thirty-five thousand dollars. Last year during the pandemic, we raised twenty-six thousand. And overall, since 2013, we've raised over a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars to help support our students. And this year, a lot.
Wow, that is.
Yeah, thank you. And then this year, we're aiming to raise thirty thousand. So we know that that is a challenge goal, but I think we're up to it this year. All funds, as Steve mentioned, will benefit our Montgomery County students. So the exciting part, we were talking about this a little bit prior to the meeting this afternoon, is our Dayton Five Hundred Race for Education. And as he mentioned, it's the brainchild of our assistant county administrator, Tom Kelly. We've had a great time setting up. He's had a great time setting up, I should say. But everyone that participated last year had a hot blast. I mean, there's a lot of competition in Montgomery County against our, you know, for our employees. So we're just excited with the campaign. So with the Race Five Hundred, you can select a car based on week or all month for the races. You select it, you pay for it, and then you can race as many weeks as you pay for that car to be in the race. We have over sixty cars that are available to participate in the race. And, you know, the proceeds go to awards. When you select your car, you can go online and you can see here, www.mcohio.org/UNCF. We have a webpage and all the activities that I'll talk about today will be listed on this webpage. And it's live today, so that's exciting as well.
So Jerry, if I could help you out for just a minute? I don't want this to be short. We have over sixty cars registered right now. There are two hundred cars available.
I was gonna say, that's enough for all of us.
Yeah, so there are two hundred cars available on the website. If we sell out the two hundred, we will find more.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a few in my office, but they told me I could write just to keep everything up. We also have currently twelve race sponsors. So as you have ever been to the Five Hundred Race and you see the name sponsors around, right? We'll have the name sponsors as our sponsors that have so far committed to be sponsors. So we're looking for more sponsors. So if, you know, time hasn't run out for you to be a sponsor for a state five hundred. So we're excited to participate there. Also, I just want to give a shout out to our commissioners for being sponsors. I want to give a shout out to, we have a couple of elected officials that have committed to being sponsors. Our auditor, Paul Key, our reporter, Brandon McLean, and our chair of process. So we want to thank them for being sponsors. And then we've had agencies, county sponsors. We've also had department sponsors. Now, new this year, because every year we have something that is the demolition derby. And so.
I know my staff will be in it because they love demolition derby.
I do too.
Yes, yes. And so, again, this year, we have a, well, this is new this year, the demolition derby. It's exciting. It's gonna be a one-time event, which will be February the twenty-fourth. We'll livestream this race or at least have it available for viewing as everyone can see this happen. And Tom Kelly, you want to share how this demolition derby works? Like the cars go in and, you know, but come on, give a little bit.
It's a work in progress. But very briefly, what'll happen is there'll be a rotating wheel in the center. Cars will come in and they'll hit obstacles, move around. Other cars will come in, hit the cars, hit the obstacles, and we'll see where they all fall. Then there'll be some points assigned and see who becomes the demolition derby champ. It's something new we've come up with and, you know, it's all about having fun and trying to raise money for the UNCF camp. It's a different twist on the race environment, so just.
So when is the actual Daytona? It's in February, right? Yeah.
Till the end of February. I don't have the exact date.
Yeah, we have it. We have the event scheduled for the February four of the activity.
Gotcha.
Okay. And then, so if you're already signed up for the Dayton Five Hundred Race, you can get a discount to participate in the demolition derby. So we offer discounts as well as part of the race for our students to attend college. In addition, we have something for everybody. We also have a silent auction, art, and more. And so you can see here just a sample of the artwork that's available, some of the pottery. And then also we have some security services as well that'll be available through various baskets and things of that. So if you want to check out our website again, to be able to sign up for the site.
Yeah, and it's also important to note that all these items are donated, so we bear no cost in these. They're all donated.
And where will those be displayed, like they were in the past?
So we can go look at the art.
Oh, if you want to physically look at the art, then you can come to our department, which is Human Service Development. But we have pictures of the art, I don't know what, yeah, and the pottery. We all have it.
The first year that we did the auction, we did a touring exhibit. And we found to make sure that we don't have any accidental damage of the art. It's much easier to keep it in one single spot. And then, of course, with COVID, you know, with the pandemic, it's been a little more tricky. So if we keep it in one spot, it's a safer endeavor.
So you can see here, we have some more items. This Valentine basket, the picture really does include a bunch of things. Two of the items that are included. So you have some champagne food. You have lots of best of ice cream. You have Valentine's cards because we thought, give it to the person prior to Valentine's, so you don't have to worry about why it's good. In addition, you have some bath and body work. You have a fifty-dollar gift card, Tom said, off. In addition, we have some balloons and other things that are included. So you'll want to get a Valentine's raffle ticket so that who might win this basket, and we have two of them. So that'll be very helpful if you're interested. And as I said, we'll deliver by February seventh, so you'll have In addition, if anybody knows me, know I love. And so we have Dine to Donate, and we thank you know, for again, helping us this year and allowing us to have Dine to Donate sent on February the eleventh, which is a Friday, eleven and three o'clock. So you can get profit from that, from the meal that I purchased that day during that time. You can dine in, carry out, or order online all for us for our fundraiser campaign. In addition, our own Adamas Board is sponsoring our press book for our person. Like I said, Tom, like Pete, I've heard these are very tasty. I've had them a couple of times and everybody else says they're very tasty. So we're excited to have smalls participate this year. We're offering the press book. As I said, our Adamas Board is sponsoring this activity. Well, the delivery date, this is a pre-order activity. The delivery date will be February. So you'll want to look on the website for that information. Well, and work with our UNCF coordinators because they're the ones who will be taking the order for the press. In addition, I said we have some we have masks that'll be available. We also have keychains that were designed for UNCF this year. And then our staff really like the casual day where they can dress a little bit more casual during the day while they So our coordinators have gone above and beyond here to try and all different types of activities. I've only listed a few of them because the department will have other activities associated as well with the staff. So right now, I also want to give a special shout out to Jessica Ababey for helping me this year and coordinate all the activities and the meetings for our coordinators. She's been a wonderful help. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the scholarship program because for our viewers, we want students to apply and complete applications. So here's a little bit of information. It's open to high school students who are residents of Montgomery County. Open to all students, as Steve mentioned, regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, or race. Also, students must be planning to attend a two-year, four-year university or college. And this is something specific to some accounts because, you know, some students decide to go to a superior university prior to a degree. In addition, excuse me, students must complete the free application for federal student aid or FAFSA. It's available now for students to complete. It's simple to complete. If they need assistance, they should reach out to us. We'll get them some assistance to complete the application. But this is not unique to our UNCF scholarship campaign. Other scholarships, grants, things of that nature, students must complete this, so it's important. Parents, the students complete this application. In addition, for our scholarship application, they need to have some information about their background. Sometimes they have resume they share that they can just utilize to type in the information into the scholarship application. And they will need recitation letters so they can reach out to their teachers and counselors in the community as well. Students must have a five-day, and all scholarships must, or scholarship students must demonstrate unmet financial So at this time, we have a surprise because we've been in contact with our students that have received scholarships this year. And so I want to thank Jessica for working with the students. I also want to thank Danielle Malagari. I hope I said her name right because she's from our communications department and she helped us with this video. So it's a free video.
My name is Naya Shivers. I'm attending Xavier University. I'm studying nursing. My mom is a single mom, so getting this scholarship really helped me, like be able to finish my first semester. So I just want to say thank you so much because it was really needed and it's greatly appreciated. What I want to do with nursing, I want to be a study dermatology. I struggled a lot with my skin, like in high school. I just want to help other people like be confident in their skin. I just want to say thank you so much. This has meant a lot to me and my family.
My name is Amaria Hall. The school I am attending is Tennessee State University, and my major is nutrition. I was very grateful and blessed to receive the scholarship. Three years ago, I started a workout journey. I ended up losing thirty pounds. So I was just fascinated and intrigued by the health industry, all of it, like eating healthy foods and exercising. So it really, it was almost like a hobby for me. So I think just learning a lot of it was just interesting. So I just wanted to attend school and learn more and educate myself more about it to help others. I just want to say thank you. It really motivated me to receive this scholarship, and it was one less thing to worry about. My mom is a single mother, so we were like, how are we going to pay for school? It made me feel better about myself and made me feel like I can do more and that my work doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you just for supporting me overall.
I were very excited and willing to thank all of our employees and friends as like I'm for supporting our Montgomery County Scholarship. And so it was nice to meet the young lady. We're looking forward to meeting some of the other scholarships that we can as well. So with that, I just say thank you. Please look up the website, www.mcohio.org/UNCF. All of the campaigns listed there for students and also for our Montgomery County employees to participate in all of our content for this scholarship.
Thank you. And like I said, I'm pretty sure my team will be in the demolition derby. I'll be surprised if they're not. All right.
Okay, I was just gonna say that, you know, I have to give a shout out to our employees. They always, always step up, no matter what it is, no matter what we ask, they're always right there. So I want to thank all the employees because they know the importance of things like this. So thank you.
Rev those engines, right?
Yeah. No, I think what I'd also add is, you know, whether it's UNCF, it's United Way, it's Culture Works, all these are campaigns that are sponsored by you, the commissioners. And the employees are always grateful to have the opportunity to be involved in these kinds of campaigns because it reflects your vision of investing in people. And it allows the employees to take a part in that vision. And everyone has a good time, they enjoy it, but they all know at the end of the day, they're helping other people from our community. And that's what this is all about, in whatever campaign it is. But on behalf of UNCF and the campaign that we all work in so diligently, thank you for giving us this opportunity to do that on behalf of the students and behalf of the employees that do all the work. It's not us, it's the employees that do all the work. So thank you.
Thank you. Very good thing. All right. So our first is the county engineer, Paul Turner.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. We have several resolutions today. First is to authorize an LPA federal local let project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Dayton International Airport Northeast Logistics Access Project in the city of Van Dalia and Butler Township. That's resolution twenty-two dash one fifty-two. One fifty-three is to authorize a lease agreement with HMC Congress Park LLC for the engineer inspector's field office, leasing approximately one thousand square feet of space located at seven oh three Congress Park Drive with a monthly rate of one thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents through February twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three. Somebody's putting in a roundabout over our current field office. Then we have several resolutions to release ten percent letters of credit maintenance bonds. First is one fifty-four for Weatherstone, Section Four in Washington Township in the amount of eleven thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and twenty cents. One fifty-five is the Springs at the Village of Winding Creek, Section Four in Washington Township in the amount of forty-four thousand thirty-six dollars and six cents. And one fifty-six is Creekside at Villages of Winding Creek, Section Four, Washington Township in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars and ten cents.
You have a few more.
I'm sorry. Okay, then we have a ten percent, we have release of a hundred percent sidewalk bond letters of credit with VWC Holdings Limited. One fifty-seven is the Springs at the Villages of Winding Creek, Section Four in Washington Township in the amount of sixty-seven thousand four hundred forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. And one fifty-eight is Creekside at the Villages of Winding Creek, Section Two in Washington Township in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred two dollars and fifty-six.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve at court.
Under approve at court. Thank you, commissioners. We have resolution zero one five nine, request proposals for the courtroom audio visual recording system.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Juvenile court.
Thank you, commissioners. For the juvenile court, we have two for today, twenty-two dash zero one six zero, which is authorized agreement due December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two with Dr. Pell doing business as the Institute for Integrated Health Solutions LLC to oversee the delivery of healthcare services for use at the juvenile court and the center department in an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars. And twenty-two dash zero one six one, which is where it's authorized that agreement with the city of Dayton to provide mediation services in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County coroner.
Thank you, commissioners. Under county coroner, we have resolution zero one six two, authorizing the purchase from Expedia for lab equipment in the amount not to exceed one thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. County administrator.
Thank you, commissioner. Under county administrator, we have the clerk's office approve the minutes from the meeting January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. And two resolutions, zero one six three, approval of bills, list available in the clerk's office. And zero one six four, approval of travel and expenses, list available in the clerk's office.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Administrative services.
Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you. We have a few items for you today. Twenty-two, one sixty-five is approval of personnel actions, and the list is available in the clerk's office. We have one sixty-six, authorizes an agreement with AP Architecture to verify existing conditions, develop the project program, formulate designs, develop plans and specifications and assist in the construction admin and observation for the rival fourth floor public defender renovation project at a cost not to exceed three hundred and eight thousand eight hundred dollars through September thirty of twenty twenty-three. Zero one sixty-seven, request proposals for workers' compensation, third-party administration for the risk, safety, and emergency management department. One sixty-eight, authorizes a change order to the agreement with Security One-O-One Ohio LLC for court security improvements project by increasing the original amount by eighty-eight thousand one hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-nine cents for a revised total of one million one hundred and two thousand five hundred and sixty and sixty-five cents. And this is through April thirty of twenty twenty-two. Couple of price agreement extensions. BI Incorporated for electronic home monitoring services for various county departments through January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. And one zero one seventy is for JB Lawn and Landscaping, Inc., for yard waste recycling services for the Environmental Services Department. That's through February twenty-eight, twenty-three. We have a couple purchases. Zero one seven one is for Ken's Truck Repair, Inc., through Houston Galveston Area Council contract of five twenty-twenty-three Titan forty-eight-foot TW refuse tipper trailers for the Environmental Services Department at a cost not to exceed two hundred and twenty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-six and twenty-five cents. And this is to authorize the trade-in of five twenty-nineteen Titan forty-eight-tempered trailers. Zero one seventeen, one seventy-two is Ohio Machinery through the State of Ohio Master Maintenance Agreement of Caterpillar Equipment Parts and Service. of Caterpillar Equipment Parts and Service for the Fleet Services Department at a cost not to exceed seventy thousand. And finally, we have a few bids. Uh, twenty-two, zero one seventy-three has been pooled, and also twenty-two, zero one seventy-five has been pooled. Twenty-two, one seventy-four, Historic Courthouse Boiler Replacement Project at an estimated cost of two hundred and forty thousand. And zero one seventy-six is for Geotechnical Testing Services Price Agreement for the Environmental Services Department. And I believe that's it.
I move for approval. She moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Environmental services.
Thank you commissioners. We have one resolution today, zero one seven seven. Amend the agreement with AMG Incorporated for consulting services for construction of the Compliance Art Flash Assessment Project by adding sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars to the original amount for a revised total of four hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
O M B.
Good afternoon. We have one resolution for your consideration. One seventy-eight, authorize the purchase from ClearGov Incorporated for budgeting software in an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the year twenty twenty-two, with options to renew.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Human services.
Uh, thank you. There is one item under job and family services. Uh, one seventy-nine will amend resolution twenty-one dash thirteen fifty-four and approve the advertisement and opening of a thirty-day public comment period to review and comment on the proposed amendment, or amended Department of Job and Family Services Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Plan for federal fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Business services.
Thank you commissioner. Under business services and community economic development, I have two authorized agreements. Zero one eighty, Palisades Arcadia Baseball LLC, doing business as Dayton Professional Baseball LLC for a suite license agreement in amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Zero one eight one, Technical Services Collaborative LLC for backup plans examiner services for the Building Regulations Department in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The next two, authorized delegation of activities agreements. Zero one eight two, County Corp. for Housing Rehabilitation Matching Funds in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Zero one eight three, City of Myersburg for the owner-occupied homeowner repair and improvement phase three program in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars of CDBG funds through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The next three, amend agreements to provide rental assistance to households located in Montgomery County impacted by COVID nineteen by increasing the amounts and extending the terms through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two to coincide with the U.S. Treasury expenditure deadline. Zero one eight four, City of Kettering, by increasing the original amount by two million, one hundred thousand for a revised total of three million, six hundred thousand dollars. Zero one eight five, Homeful, by increasing the original amount by two million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a revised total of six million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Zero one eight six, Goodwill Easter Seals Miami Valley, by increasing the original amount by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a revised total of two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the last two, under Community Economic Development, amend agreements for households located in Montgomery County impacted by COVID nineteen by extending the terms through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two to coincide with the U.S. Treasury expenditure deadline. Zero one eight seven, Help Link Two-One-One, provide intake services related to rental assistance. And zero one eight eight, Catholic Social Services of the Miami Valley to provide rental assistance.
Move to approve.
Second, I just wanted to say I'm really happy that we're able to continue to, um, have these partners with these funds, because it's helping people, keeping them in their homes.
Absolutely. Okay, um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And under county commissioners, we have, um, twenty-two dash zero one eight nine to appoint Brendan Nguyen to the Arts and Cultural District for a three-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. One nine zero, appoint Craig Rickett and Jennifer Wenzel, mandated members to the Family and Children First Council for their Terms of Service. One nine one, appoint Bill Duncan, City of Oakwood, and Jeffrey Mims, Jr., City of Dayton, to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, SWAC, and the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee, SWAMCE, for two-year terms through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. One ninety-two, appoint Tim Pritchard and Mark Kelkey to the Solid Waste Management Policy Committee, SWAMCE, for two-year terms through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I move for approval.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, do we have any comments by citizens? There are none? Okay, comments by our assistant county com, administrator.
Thank you commissioner. Uh, once again, we'd like to say thank you to Matt's team over at Environmental Services, and especially the frontline workers who go out all hours of the day and night, uh, to fix water main breaks, which is happening right now due to fluctuating temperatures. If you see the crews out trying to fix these water main breaks, please be courteous. Give them space when passing by. Also, use caution when driving through wet spots, especially when below freezing. Help us keep the environmental services crews safe as they restore water.
Absolutely. And also, um, we may have a big week with, uh, Paul's department. Um, you know, any, any tips of keeping out of the way of the big truck?
Stay home.
Stay home. Stay home.
Yeah, Thursday might be a good day to stay.
Okay.
We, uh, it's going to be a tricky storm, because like Paul, it's one time to get out. The ice is early the.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
And, uh, it'll be wild.
You mean Wednesday night?
Wednesday.
Right. We, we got you.
Anyway.
It, it's coming. Coming. Yeah. Mm-hmm. So when you guys do the DI shirt, is, is that still, you still use beet juice?
Beet juice is a part of the.
Okay. The cocktail, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, good luck. You guys always do a great job. Um, so hiring, um, not just in our county, but throughout the state and throughout the country has been a tough task for many companies right now. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to connect workers with the companies that need employees. And so we have scheduled our construction job fair for February the twenty-fourth from noon to four at the Job Center on Edwin C. Moses. And, you know, we've done this construction fair several times now, and it's a great opportunity for companies to meet potential employees and for the individuals, uh, to see what openings there are in the construction industry. And we are taking registration for that, um, for the construction companies to have a booth at the event. And registration is also open for anyone looking for a job. And you can visit www dot thejobcenter.org slash job fair. Again, that's thejobcenter.org backslash job fair to get registered. Um, and you know, we've had great success at, at those, at our job fairs. Uh, people are hired on the spot often. So, um, February twenty-fourth at the Job Center. Uh, I was just going to add, what we were just talking about, Paul, with our roads and everything. And I'm just encouraging everyone, please check on your neighbors, family members, the elderly, uh, make sure everybody's okay. And please, if it gets that bad, don't go out unless you have to. And take care of our little four-legged friends, also, I have to throw that out. Anyway, on another note, we're proud to partner with the Bureau of Chronic Disease Prevention with Public Health of Dayton and Montgomery County as we recognize February being Heart Healthy Awareness Month. Now, according to the American Heart Association's twenty-one, twenty twenty-one research, cardiovascular disease claims more lives each year than all forms of cancer and chronic lower respiratory disease combined. So to help public health raise awareness to heart health and decrease cardio, cardiovascular disease, we are lighting up our county building right here. It's going to be red starting tonight. So please take care of yourself.
Absolutely. It's also almost the time of year to start filing your taxes. Uh, and we're proud to again, have the Montgomery County Job Center serve as a site for the Volunteer Income Tax Assistant or VITA program that's organized by the city of Dayton. Now, there are locations across Montgomery County where IRS-trained volunteers help workers get the tax credits that they deserve. It's very easy for someone preparing their own taxes truly to miss out on a lot of money in their refund. Uh, these volunteers make sure you get the maximum refund. So if there's any question, please check this out, one of these sites. All VITA tax preparation is by appointment, so you can't just show up. So call the United Way of Greater Dayton's Help Link at nine three seven, nine one three, two thousand. I'll say that again. Nine three seven, nine one three, two thousand to learn more and schedule an appointment. And it really does make a difference. Um, you know, every dollar in the hands then just helps, uh, especially these families, uh, to be able to, um, weather whatever's ahead this year, because it's been some challenging years.
Well, and the VITA program, it's been years that, that the federal government has, um, assisted with that. And, you know, a lot of times you'll, the, some of the volunteers will be retired, uh, accountants and, and taxpayers, you know, and so it's great. In fact, years and years and years ago, I could never do my own taxes now. But, um, I was one of the volunteers. And it was, and when I was at UD Law. And, you know, the people that come in are just, and especially, you know, with the forms and, and I, and I highly, highly recommend people do this, because, um, well, it's free.
Right.
Yeah. But you've got to make an appointment.
Right, you've got to make an appointment, but I would do it sooner than later. Don't wait till the last minute.
Yeah.
So be sure to check out this available service. That's it for today, and, um, believe it or not, the next Montgomery County, uh, commission meeting will be Tuesday, February eighth, at one thirty P.M.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.